There we go. All those meeting to order, May seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance. Alright, good morning, everyone. We do have a quorum present this morning with all five commissioners in attendance. It's a busy and stacked agenda today with twenty-five action items, so hopefully we, if we can keep Mary's talking limited, be out of here before midnight.
He's gonna pick on me. Mister Turney, I need a little help over here.
First order business commissioners is the approval of the agenda. If there's no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Chairman.
Mister Richards.
Move to approve the agendas presented.
Give a motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close and aye. Motion's unanimous. Moving right along into tab A, we've got two public hearings for a couple of budget amendments this morning. First being Resolution twenty-four oh five C L O one for the county coroner's operating budget. With us this morning is Rebecca Romero, our accounting specialist out of the county clerk's office, and good morning Rebecca.
Good morning. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Yes, so the first one is for the county coroner's office. Unfortunately, they had some increases to their professional medical services. So we're asking for ten thousand to be transferred out of the general fund reserves into his operating expenses.
Thanks Rebecca. Questions on the amendment commissioners? If not, we do need to have a public hearing on this. So at this time, if there's anyone in the audience or online that would like to speak to this budget amendment for the county coroner's operating budget, now would be the appropriate time. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
I move to approve resolution, Resolution twenty-four dash zero five dash C L dash zero one for the county coroner's operating budget.
You have a motion to approve by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close and aye. Motion's unanimous. Second item under the public hearing today is Resolution twenty-four oh five C L O two, a budget amendment for the county risk management's operating budget. And we'll hand it back to Rebecca.
Yes, this morning, I'm also asking for a budget amendment for the risk management operating budget for fifteen thousand dollars out of the general reserves. Ashley did touch base with me and wanted me to let you know that they have thirty-nine thousand dollars coming into that count for reimbursement. So we will get the money back. They're just kind of in the hole right now. The future when this happens, if they absolutely need a budget amendment, or if we know that they're gonna be reimbursed. If we can just hold on to the bills and then just pay them as we're reimbursed. I told her I would check with you guys on that. I wasn't too sure.
I would think as long as the timing adds up, it should be okay. This one's probably a little bit, I don't know when that money's coming in. I believe I saw in the packet there that they anticipated within this fiscal year, so as long as that's the case, I would say it's probably okay to do it that way.
Okay.
Any other feedback on that commissioners?
Well, unless they get penalties on the bills.
Yeah, I would make sure that that wouldn't happen. I mean, if we needed to, then we could get them paid and then they could always probably just go into the negative and take it out of the roll-up account and then put it back into there.
Questions or comments commissioners?
Mister Chairman.
Mister Slaughter.
Not sure that I fully understood, but just a similar situation. In my budget, when I was county treasurer, we had similar type of fund where we actually had postage for motor vehicle license plates and things of that nature, that we knew we were going to have that money coming in each year. But it came through the general fund and had to be appropriated through our budget at that time. I would think this would be the same type of circumstance where if we did not have the funding in the budget, we should handle it as we're doing this and doing a budget amendment. And then, once that budget amendment is passed, we could go ahead and pay it. But I think that that money should continue to hit the general fund in the same situation. That's what it did in my case. I would see it as similar.
Very good. Any other feedback?
Well, the conclusion is.
We're gonna use our trusty treasurer's advice, former treasurer's advice on this to handle it like you are currently.
Okay.
Is everyone alright with that? You're saving your speeches for your comments or what? With that, we do need to open up a public hearing for this resolution. If there's anyone in the audience or online that would like to speak to the budget amendment for the county risk operating budget, now would be the appropriate time. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mister Chairman, I would move to approve Resolution twenty-four dash zero five dash C L dash zero two.
You have a motion to approve by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close and aye. Motion's unanimous. Thanks Rebecca.
Thank you.
Moving right along in the agenda, next up is the county resident comments and concerns portion. If there's anyone in the audience or online that would like to address the governing body on any issues, now would be the appropriate time. And good morning, Mister Devis.
Good morning, Mister Chairman. Dave Devis, the Sweetwater County Assessor. I saw, looking at the agenda, that Treasurer Cowan was on the agenda to update you on the refund program. And I thought I probably should as well. I apologize for not getting on the agenda and just doing it here, but I felt like it was information you may want to be aware of. We have done a lot of outreach for the refund program. We have been to both senior centers, given out a total of probably a hundred and fifty applications for the refund program to taxpayers there. I was on Let's Talk with Al Harris to talk about a lot of the property tax legislation that was passed. We are currently getting names and addresses for people regarding the long-term homeowners exemption. We're at about two hundred and twenty applications at this point. Not everybody's gonna qualify. But those people, we wanted to send the applications to. I'm trying to work with the senior centers to get their mailing list, so I can send the applications using their contact information. They're being a little, I think they wanna make sure there's no issues as far as confidentiality and stuff, and that's, that's fair. But we are trying to get as much information as we can out to people on all of the property tax reform that's coming. Also, letting people know that the veterans exemption is gonna double next year. The application process is still the same. They won't know anything is different until the reduction actually happens from their veterans exemption. And then House Bill forty-five, just to give you an update, that's the one that capped the increase on property values at four percent. So it's, it's value that, that you never saw. Okay, so it's residential value that was capped before it's ever gonna have a mill levy applied to it. But that total amount is about a hundred and ten million dollars in Sweetwater County. So that equates to about ten million dollars in assessed value. So it has been an impact, you can argue substantial or not. I looked this morning, and that amount, that ten million is about three percent of our total residential value. So it's not, it's not a big, big number, but it is something we may just need to keep an eye on and be aware of. But that's really an update on, on the refund program. I did run a quick budget estimate this morning. And total budget, total valuation, again, with Senate file sixty, this is all ballpark numbers, about two point seven billion. And for reference, we were two point nine five five last year. So things are, and it's really oil and gas that's come down. Gas, oil is down. I'm sorry, gas production is down two hundred and fifty-eight million. Oil production is down sixty-one million, and Trona is up about sixty-seven with the numbers I've got currently. So it's just not, it's the gas that's really hurting us right at the moment. So we'll see how that plays out. Again, we're using the best information we can, and the system is nowhere near perfect, but that's the information we have at this moment. So any questions I can answer on any of that?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Dave, thanks for the update on that. I noticed in those property tax statements that obviously it's capped at four percent, but there's still the calculation as though that four percent didn't exist, what it would be, what we'd be paying.
Right.
It just feels like after that two-year period, I mean, residents are gonna reap that benefit for two years, right, which is covered by the state, but then at that point, I mean, they're gonna be that much further ahead, and I just, I'm not sure we've solved the issue.
Right. House Bill forty-five has no sunset date. So House Bill forty-five with the residential cap, provided the legislature doesn't change that, that goes on as long as we, as long as they leave it. So House Bill forty-five has no cap.
I thought it had a two-year sunset.
That's the long-term homeowners. The long-term homeowners has a two-year sunset date. And that's something that the legislature could actually go in and just change the date. So if they chose to continue to fund that program, they could do that. And I do have a summary sheet that I can send you that's got all this stuff on it. So I will bring that down.
Mister Chairman.
Mister Richards.
Dave, in your estimation, that the four percent cap has no sunset date, but what about the funding of that?
That one is not backfilled either. So there is no, there's no makeup provision. The county is just, we did not.
Comes out of the counties.
Yeah, there was just never, and it, it was never budgeted for, so it's never, it's not money lost, it's just money not gained. So it's not anything that, that we're gonna miss because we never had it to begin with. But the House Bill forty-five, there's no sunset date and there's no backfill. Now, the long-term homeowners, it's a bigger adjustment. It's fifty percent off of the property tax bill, but it's only for a very limited group. It's for over sixty-five, pay taxes in Wyoming for twenty-five years, and have to live in the house for eight months. So the Department of Revenue estimated, I think they said about eleven hundred total people would qualify all across the state, and they were using the best information they could come up with, but it was just a guess. But we have given out two hundred and twenty applications so far. In this, you know, we send out the assessments and we get all the questions and phone calls. First thing we do is get an address to send the refund program, and the second thing is mention all the exemptions. And just to be, so you guys know, the way this works, the way we understand it right now is, is House Bill forty-five caps the increase at four percent. If you're over sixty-five, you could get the fifty percent reduction after that. If you were a veteran, you could get the six thousand dollars after that, after that amount's been doubled. And then when you finally get to the end and you actually have a tax bill, if you do qualify, you can still apply for the refund program. So all of these benefits are in place. There's, one does not kick you out of the other. They are all still in place, but I will get you that sheet with that legislation. I'll send it to everybody.
Yeah, I guess I had a misunderstanding there. I was thinking, one, that it sunsetted in a couple of years, and two, that it was backfilled by the state, but it's the exact opposite.
That, and there may have been versions of the bill as it progressed that did have some of that language, but the final version, at least that I'm aware of, does not have that.
Question I had the other day, someone was talking about the House Bill forty-five and whether or not it pertains to secondary residents. Do you know off the top of your head?
The way the legislation was put in place and because it took so long to get finished, they had to be, they had to kinda hit it with a broad brush. So they did every single family residential structure. So if you happen to own three houses, you got that exemption on all three of those residential structures. So we couldn't determine ownership. We didn't have time for an application process. We didn't, we just had to, again, broad strokes. So everybody that has a residential property that qualified, got the, got the four percent cap. Now in Sweetwater County, there were a lot of properties that didn't go up enough to get the cap, but there were some that did. So, and that's where that, that dollar amounts I mentioned earlier came from. So.
Questions or comments?
Mister Chairman.
Mister Slaughter.
One question, Dave, going back to your valuation estimate, you said that our valuation basically from last year was at two point nine roughly billion.
Two point nine five five.
You're saying two point seven this year. Is it roughly a two hundred million dollar difference?
Yeah, that's really close.
So basically what we would be looking at, and the conversations that you and I had, we kinda feel like the best method of coming up with what the fiscal year revenue for upcoming budget is, to take the mineral values from the last twelve months and use that as, as kind of a guideline.
I think, yeah.
If that's the case, then if I'm correct, we're looking at about a two and a half million dollar decrease in the amount of money that would be available in this budget versus what we had projected in, in the last fiscal year budget.
Yeah, when I, when I did the math, the actual difference between the two point six nine five and two point nine five five was about two hundred and sixty million, and that takes the twelve mil from thirty-five million four hundred to thirty-two three, so it's, it's yeah, but again, I, you know, the numbers I'm getting are certified values from the previous calendar year. So when Senate file sixty came into place, it didn't change any of the reporting numbers or any of the valuation or any of the mill levy calculations. Everything I do is exactly the same. The only thing different is the billing and collection that the treasurer's office does, and it's based on current year production. So I still say the best way to, to manage this thing is to treat it like sales tax. Sales tax comes monthly, it's like a quarter behind, and I think we just estimate the best way we can from the amount we got in the previous month and just move forward, and maybe on a twelve-year or twelve-month cycle, that kinda stuff. But I, I really think minerals are, for us, you know, it's gonna be like sales taxes for the municipalities. It's just something where, you know, it's just really hard to predict right now. Really hard.
Any other feedback commissioners? Okay, thanks for the information, Dave.
Not a problem. Okay, thank you.
Still under the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda, if there's anyone else that'd like to address the governing body, now is the time. Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda. And that's gonna move us right along into tab B, which is the consent agenda. For you this morning, commissioners, are eleven items under the consent agenda, first being the approval of the April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four minutes. The approvals of the county vouchers and warrants and the EALs. Approval of bonds, approval of the May seventh, two thousand twenty-four a-bates and rebates, request to restaff two vacant positions in the custodial department. Request to restaff a vacant position in the sheriff's office, request to restaff a position in the clerk of district court's office. A request to restaff a vacant position in the assessor's office. A ratification of an MOU for the Southwest Wyoming CO2 sequestration project. Request to ratify the CLG comments on the Bridger-Teton National Forest Plan Revision and Initial Forest Plan Story Map. And last, request to ratify the Southwest Wyoming Regional Airports Federal Aviation Administration Land Use Change. Commissioners, I would ask if there's any requests to further discuss or remove any items from the consent agenda. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close and aye. Motion's unanimous. It's gonna move us right along into Commissioner comments, and first up, it's Commissioner Toman. And your time's up, so we're gonna move right along into it. Just kidding.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I am so proud to be able to give this report. I'm gonna take extra long now because of that. On May seventh, I had to, the airport board meeting, plans are moving forward with construction of the new commercial terminal modernization program, as well as all the other projects going on up there. Then on April twenty-fifth, the commissioners met with the airport director and talked about the need for some stopgap funding, or maybe some additional funding. Up to twenty-one million to five point three million may be needed. So we're still working through that in a resolution. I met with Dave Mead from the museum regarding storage options. It still drives me crazy that the museum has like six bathrooms and all that wasted space. Jean's probably gonna throw me out if I ask about it one more time, but it looks like those would make great storage units, but I guess they're gonna have to work through that in the budget process. I went to Green River High School's wind program with Devon Brew Baker to give a presentation on aviation opportunities and careers on that same day, May seventh. Attend the local coalition of, local, coalition of local governments meeting via Zoom to get the updates on federal projects that we are involved in with, as a cooperator. On the eighteenth of April, I listened to the Fontanelle Working Group. Fontanelle Dam is at ninety-five percent full, near average. April was dry, February, March was good. The drought response operations will probably not have to come into play, so they're not gonna have to do extra holding or shuffling of water. April twenty-second, the Greater Sage Grouse Multi-State Plan. There was an open house in Rock Springs at the White Mountain Library with good attendance. I'd say maybe over fifty people attended that. So the BLM RMP has really alerted people to the fact that these issues are important. April twenty-sixth, I participated in the BLM Resource Advisory Committee Wild Horse Working Group Zoom Meeting. We're working on recommendations to present to the full RAC or the Resource Advisory Committee in June. Healthy lands equal healthy horses, but we're just trying to reemphasize that the government should let them follow the Wild Horse and Burrow Act in managing the horses properly. April thirtieth, I talked to Emily Covey regarding eight hundred dollar funding requests from the ham radio operators for a tower. Since this would be for personal use, she did not recommend that we fund it. There's already EMS interface with ham operators for emergencies. May second, there was a local work group of the natural resource conservation through the Conservation District, resource interests or priorities are made to the NRCS, the Natural Resource Conservation Service State Technical Team, to provide funding priorities for the farm bill projects. Grazing lands management was number one. Number two is stream bank riparian area protection and invasive species control. Number three was irrigation water management. There was discussion on the hundred and forty pivots in Eden Valley, of which a hundred of them are twenty-seven years old or more. The concern that young operators may not be able to afford an entire new pivot and may choose to subdivide, thus converting egg lands to non-egg uses. So that was a major concern. If there isn't some kind of assistance in being able to replace those. May second, I picked up copies from the planning office regarding County Road one twenty-four and delivered them to the affected parties in Eden Valley. And I just wanna thank the Sweetwater County Planning Office. We have the greatest staff. It's great to work with them. When you personally have to interact with them on a project or something, you really do appreciate their professionalism and, and their, their promptness in getting things done. I am in the process of making Eden Valley my permanent residence. I still live out of a suitcase, but I'm trying to combine two houses into one, so that should be interesting if I ever live through the project. So I'm getting to be a construction coordinator. But it's been great working with the county, so I just wanted to thank them for that. Upcoming on May eighth, the FFA Green River High School Awards Night. May fourteenth, the Bittercrick Kilpecker Creek Working Advisory Committee meets at ten AM at White Mountain Library. Ongoing process of the water quality on the Bittercrick and projects as well. May twelfth is Mother's Day, and I guess have a great time with your moms. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. That might be the second shortest report you've ever given.
I tried. I know we have a long day.
Any questions for Commissioner Toman's report commissioners? If not, Commissioner Richards, the floor is yours.
Morning, Mister Chairman, fellow commissioners. Looks like we're gonna spend a lot of time together today, so I'll try to keep this relatively brief. First off, I want to recognize that today is National Teachers Appreciation Day. For our family, that means offering my appreciation to my wife Teresa, who homeschools our grandson. So happy Teachers' Day to you and to all the teachers out there that make a difference in our children's lives. After our meeting, after our last meeting, I attended the Rock Springs City Council meeting in support of their announcement honoring Coach Castillo with the renaming of the Grant Street Connector to Art Castillo Way. Congratulations, Coach. It's a well-deserved honor and very fitting. On Thursday and Friday, the eighteenth and nineteenth, I attended the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Summit in Casper. It was a good couple of days of absorbing information about the recreation industry, learning the potential for positive economic development, while recognizing and managing the negative impacts that sudden growth can also bring to a community. Fostered a lot of good discussion, and overall, I think it was a pretty good use of my time. On Saturday, the twentieth, I attended the Wyoming Republican State Convention. I have less nice things to say about that, so I'll just keep my mouth shut on that topic. On Monday, April twenty-second, I attended the BLM's Sage Grouse Plan Public Meeting. There was a lot of good information there. Unlike the Rock Springs RMP, this is a national plan that would cover the entire sage grouse habitat on lands across the west. They're managed by the BLM. On the good side, the parts of the plan that affect Wyoming are closely modeled after Wyoming's own sage grouse plans. But on the not-so-good side, while it might look okay on the surface, I think there are some population triggers in the plan that could be used to drastically limit development in the future. Since the BLM has burned any trust or goodwill that they might have once had locally, we'll need to watch it with a pretty skeptical eye. It has the potential to be just one more layer that they use to shut down growth and development in Sweetwater County. The plan is on BLM's e-planning site, and the comment period is open until, I believe, June thirteenth, so I encourage everyone to research it and make comments where appropriate. Like with the Rock Springs RMP, those comments must be substantive to be considered. On Tuesday, the twenty-third, I attended the monthly Fair Board Meeting. It looks like their budget request from us is gonna be relatively flat, though they do have a larger capital request going to the Capital Request Committee. They are getting geared up for a busy summer, and they announced their concert lineup for Fair a couple of weeks ago. It's a stacked concert lineup with a little something for everyone and a few pretty big headliners in there. On Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, I joined Commissioner, Commissioner Slaughter along with Mister Bingham and Mister DeLeon for some more discussion on Project West industrial siting requests. I think we have them pretty much nailed down. I think there are a couple of things that I would do differently if I had to do it all over again, but it was a learning process, and we have, we'll have a lot more knowledge on how to, on what we're doing as we go into the Dry Creek project. On Thursday, the twenty-fifth, I remotely attended the Sweetwater Prevention Coalition's meeting. Twenty-ninth, I attended the Joint Powers Combined Communications Board Meeting. Thirty-first, the Sweetwater County Outdoor Recreation Collaborative State Park Subcommittee Meeting. On the first, I gave an update on all things county related to the local Kiwanis chapter. On the second, I attended the Rock Springs Chambers Enterprise Committee meeting at the hospital, followed by a pre-hearing conference for Project West. Went really well. This is, this is the pre-hearing statement that we provided the Industrial Siting Committee. I think we did a fantastic job nailing it down. Compare it to, you went to Lincoln Counties, I think ours is completely defendable. Staff, I believe, recommended one reduction in our entire application, and that was, and that was to one of the municipalities, so that was not a, a part of the, of the application that we were as involved in producing. Some news that came out of that meeting was it looks like the Dry Creek application likely won't be filed until around, till around August, which is an unexpected reprieve since we were expecting it any day now, and we thought we were gonna have to jump directly back into this process with no chance of coming up for air. But with it likely coming in August now, and the hearings coming in November, that'll give us a little more time to, to prepare. Moving forward tonight, I have another meeting with the Outdoor Collaborative. Tomorrow, the Planning and Zoning Commission will meet to discuss some language changes in the zoning resolution, followed by another SCORC State Park Subcommittee Meeting. That committee is reviewing possible locations to discuss with TRW at their upcoming joint committee meetings. After that, I plan to tune in for the monthly Wyoming County Commissioners Associate, Association update. Then on Thursday, I'll attend the Carbon Storage Hub Cooperator Meeting. The monthly SEDC meeting that was scheduled for that same time is canceled because too many people were unable to attend, because some of us are going to the Carbon Storage Hub Cooperator Meeting. On the thirteenth, I'll join John King at KREO for my monthly discussion with him about what's going on in the county. Later that day, I'll join Chairman West for a visit with representatives from Genesis Alkali about what they have going on out there. Later that evening, I'll attend the Solid Waste District Number One Board Meeting. And then on the fifteenth, I'll attend the SEDC's Lunch with Leaders, and on the sixteenth- And on the 16th and 17th, I'll attend the Industrial Siting Hearings for Project West, which is finally here. Eric and John have put a fantastic amount of work into this project and I want to thank them. As well as the staff from the cities, towns and other organizations that worked so hard to put in their applications for impact funds. As well as Commissioner Slaughter for the help and perspective that he's provided through the process. I'm looking, looking forward to see how, how it finally plays out. After that, I'm looking forward to starting to dig into this budget that is ahead of us. I think our core county and component units have for the most part heated our advice to be conservative in their requests. Our capital requests are pretty weighty, but there's been so much deferred maintenance over the years, that's to be expected. I am disappointed that many of the outside entities that have historically received funding from us. Chose to increase in some, and in some cases dramatically increase their funding requests. Despite having heard repeatedly from us that revenue is estimated to be flat or even decreasing. As, as Mr. Davis pointed out to us, decreasing is, or the direction it's going. While our own public needs are ever increasing. My priority in, in, in our budget is core and component, and it's my intention to put my focus there. Which means you can expect me to be very critical of outside requests, especially new and increased ones. I think that's all I have for you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks Commissioner, good report. Busy few weeks for you with busy ones ahead as well. Where is the Industrial Siting Hearing taking place?
Uh, it's here in Green River at the Hampton. Starts on the 16th at 1:00 PM at the Hampton for the applicants hearing. After that, they're expecting about two hours for that and then the impact hearings start at probably around 3:00.
Very good, I appreciate your work on that. I know between you and Rob and staff, it's been kind of like serving on a task force, but a lot more productive and effective in that matter, so.
Well, we'll see. We'll see how much money they give us when it's over, how productive it is.
I have full faith, but I'm glad there's also a little breathing room there between this one and Dry Creek, so. Appreciate your efforts with that. Any comments or questions for Commissioner Richards' report commissioners?
I do have a question. That packet now, does that include the other counties' applications as well?
This is ours. I have a copy of Lincoln Counties here.
But they all are submitted as one and then they present separately?
No, we are, each county will present, each county and municipality will, will present separately. All of Sweetwater County's municipalities chose to come in under our umbrella, so we will present for them. But you went to, and Lincoln County were free to do it differently. And I believe some of their municipalities are going to present on their own.
Thank you.
Thanks Commissioner, appreciate your work. And Commissioner Jones, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, on April 17th, I attended the Memorial Hospital Sweetwater County Quality Committee Meeting. Uh, one of the things that's changed up there is the lab in their audit. Uh, process is switching from joint commission to what's called CAP, which is the gold standard. Uh, the CAP representatives showed up and for their initial, uh, survey. And they're very impressed with the lab and how it's running. Uh, also gave them full status and a trauma survey was completed. Again, they were very impressed with what they found. Uh, opioid strokes, C-sections were also discussed in that meeting. On April 17th, I was interviewed by a gentleman by the name of Jake Bolster. He's a writer working with Inside Climate News regarding the Jackalope Wind Farm. Uh, unfortunately, I couldn't really give him any information because my questions weren't really answered at the first wind farm public meeting. Uh, also on the 17th, I attended the Museum Board Meeting. Uh, finances were discussed as were displays and needs needed repairs to the building. Uh, on April 19th, I attended the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Summit in Casper. I agree with Commissioner Richards' comments. Uh, I think it was a great forum. The theme that I took away from it that I thought was probably a very important one was that. Uh, motorized and the non-motorized communities can work together, should work together. And, um, since I have a history of both, I firmly believe that, uh, they can coexist and, and, uh. Everybody can enjoy the, the back country. Uh, one of the things that's happening is a lot of the, uh, perceived non-motorized groups, snowboarders. Uh, skiers, that sort of thing are now using snow machines to access the back country. So that combination is already taking place. I think we just need to use our heads and figure out ways to, to get along. I then did take a few days off. My daughter celebrated her 21st birthday. And, uh, so we took her to Vegas for a few days, so it was a nice little break. On the 24th, I attended a meeting with the Wyoming State Trails Council, which I chair. Uh, is to review some changes, uh, to documents will be presented at our council meeting in Lander on the 17th of this month. Also on the 24th, I attended the Memorial Hospital Sweetwater County Finance Committee Meeting. Things continue to progress in the finance portion of the hospital. Uh, they are still working on whether or not to become critical access. Uh, the possibility of not is due to the increase in patients that they're seeing up there. On the 25th, I attended another meeting for the museum to discuss the funding request form. It's in our meeting later today and, uh, like to express my appreciation to the museum board and the staff for. Holding the line on their funding request and for also using some of their reserves. Think they've done exactly as we've requested. Uh, later on the 25th, I attended Joint Powers Telecom Board Meeting. Uh, had a fairly detailed presentation from all west about locates and build outs in Green River. On April 29th, uh, had a really good and very interesting phone conversation with Senators Jones and Case. Senator Case is from Lander. He's very knowledgeable about the wind energy, uh, and how it works, the advantages, the disadvantages. Uh, we talked about several topics, including the wind energy tax credits and incentives they receive. Uh, we discussed sales taxes for the counties. And, uh, the taxes they pay on the energy as well as property taxes. Also discussed was how much, if any, energy stays in Wyoming. Uh, some of the other topics discussed were bird kills, uh, their mitigation plan for eagle kills. Uh, migration routes and disposal of the wind turbines that they reach end of life. Uh, I'd like to thank Senator Case for giving us his valuable time. He's very knowledgeable. On the 30th, I attended a meeting of motorized representatives regarding the Bridger Teton, uh, and their upcoming land use plan. Uh, we discussed the results of the survey that Bridger Teton sent out, uh, which has been extended to May 9th. So just here in a couple of days. Uh, I know I mentioned this in our last meeting, but I'd like to remind everyone to please comment on this. Uh, it is at the bottom of the Bridger Teton National Forest Plan Revision Storybook Length. Is what they call that. We also discussed Wilderness Study Areas, submission statements and getting the word out about this public process. On May 1st, I attended the Hospital Board of Trustees Meeting. Uh, one item to note is that Dr. Barbara Suata, who is the current Board President, has submitted her application to be reappointed. Uh, I support her in that. Uh, I would like to mention now though, that if anybody is interested in being appointed to this board. Please fill out an application and keep it on file with Sally. Uh, the Board of Trustees discussed the normal topics in their standard agenda, which is, uh, on their webpage if anybody is ever interested. Uh, they passed a few policies, they're working on a master plan. Some exciting news, the lab should have a groundbreaking in about a month. Uh, this also, this last week, I should say, marked one year anniversary of the Da Vinci Robot for Soft Tissue Surgeries. Uh, that robot has been a huge success up there. So, uh, glad, uh, we decided to, uh, purchase that. I'd like to mention, uh, that Irene Richardson received a very prestigious award. From the American Hospital Association for Wyoming, she is the grassroots champion. The award was created according to the American Hospital Association. The award was created to recognize those hospital leaders who effectively educate elected officials on the hospital's vital role in the community. Who have done an exemplary job in broadening the base of community support for the hospital. And who serve as tireless advocates for their hospital staff and patients. I think those were very well deserved, that is, uh, definitely describes Irene without any question. On May 2nd, I attended the Rock Springs Chamber Enterprise Meeting where Mark Sorrell from SWAT presented essentially the same information he presented to us. Uh, finally yesterday, I met with, uh, Mr. Steve Mines regarding County Road 124 in Farson, which will be discussed later today. I appreciate Mr. Mines reaching out to me and appreciate the conversations I had later in the afternoon. Wraps up my report.
Thanks Commissioner, yeah, I'll echo your comments for Irene and her grassroots. Champion recognition, certainly well deserved for everything she does up there at the hospital. Any comments or questions for Commissioner Jones' report commissioners? If not, thanks for your work Commissioner, looks like I'm up next. On the 17th, um, I had Board of Health first thing in the morning, not a whole lot to report there. They went over some what they call county health rankings, which are just statistics they get. I believe it's from vital statistics from the state. In regards to the different, you know, health matters within the county and how we rank compared to. Other counties and even within the nation on some of those, um, from various. You know, anything from medical providers and ratios between medical provider to patients to, you know, suicide rates and, um. You know, substance abuse and what have you. So a lot of time spent on that, very interesting information. There's a link that they shared online where you can view some of that and compare. You know, to different areas throughout the state or even the region, like I said, within the nation, so. Lots of time on that. They also talked about some future board training and, um. Trying to get a little bit more engagement with the board members and understanding on what the operation does, so. Good discussions had there. That evening, I attended the Southwest Counseling's Monthly Board Meeting. They immediately went into an executive session to start off the meeting. And after two hours of sitting in the hallway, I decided that was enough. So I left and didn't get to hear anything that happened with the regular portion of their meeting, but. That's probably the second or third time that's happened with various, you know, meetings we liaise to. And I just feel like it's a little bit disrespectful, you know, to sit there for two hours when that could be something that's done at the end of the meeting, like most other. Meetings that are had and, you know, you can handle the business at the beginning, but. I don't have an update for you there other than, uh, the HHS building still looks pretty nice in the hallway and the chairs are somewhat comfortable, so. Report more on that one next month. The 25th, Commissioner Tomlin and I attended a online meeting with Devin Brubaker. In Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport as well as their Board Chairman, uh, Jim Wamsley and Mayor Mickelson from Rock Springs and Matt McBurnett. City Rock Springs' financial. Uh, Director in regards to the status of the airport with the commercial terminal and where they're at. As many of you know, they've had some issues with that construction project and the CMAR, the Construction Manager at risk. And they have since moved forward with hiring a new CMAR. Within that process, they've had to go through a re-GMP or Guaranteed Maximum Price, which is just a style of bidding on that. That has come back and has essentially doubled since the original GMP through the original CMAR. What that means is there's about a shortfall of $22 million. And so the push is on to figure out how to progress forward and what that looks like. Um, there's lots of moving parts and different funding mechanisms through the Business Council. Uh, the Federal Aviation Administration, YDOT. And obviously the local partners with the Joint Powers Board, so. Bunch of different scenarios that Devin presented, he will be coming before us all at our next meeting here on the 21st. Um, in the meantime, there's preparation of MOUs and a handful of resolutions that we will discuss. And he'll obviously go into more detail. But it hinges upon, you know, some of these different funding mechanisms with particularly the Business Council. In regards to any additional funding that may be available through loans or otherwise. Um, but a lot of that can't be released unless it's backed by local partners. And so that'll be the purpose of some of these MOUs. At present, it looks as though the worst case scenario would be about a $10.85 million. I guess lack of, of funding, uh, when we originally had that discussion, it was more like 13.2. So since then, some additional funding has became, has become available. And how that funnels through is. At a best case scenario, be looking around $3 million in local match funds between essentially us and the city of Rock Springs, so. We'll see where things shake out with that, there's going to be some. Lengthy discussions at our next meeting, I would assume. Um, if you have any questions, please reach out. Tried to get, keep you informed the best I could on that, but. We are moving forward with the preparation of those documents because there's time limits within the Business Council and being able to apply for the. Additional funding and loans that I spoke to. And they actually have a deadline of May 15th. Obviously, our next meeting is the 21st, so there's been a request to have that deadline extended to the 22nd, pending the outcomes of us and the city of Rock Springs in any direction we may provide. That would allow the Airport Board to then get on the agenda for the Business Council Meeting in September. Which then would be followed by SLIB in October. And should those be successful in the grant requests or the loan requests, that funding would be available by the end of the year, it sounds, so. Lot going on with that. Devin will obviously have a little bit better understanding and can provide more information, but. Wanted to at least keep you in the loop as we prepare and as we begin budget discussions and the lack of funding that Mr. Davis just explained, it's, uh. It's tough, you know, as a partner of that to be in that situation, have that amount of funding that's needed to continue on to finish that project. It's, kind of puts us in a tough position, so. More to come on that. Last week, I attended the Spring Board Retreat for the Wyoming County Commissioners Association down in Saratoga. That was a two-day event on Wednesday and Thursday. Uh, they normally have a spring and a fall meeting. So it could have been in a worse spot, although it did snow on us both days, so. There you have it for that. Not a whole lot to report, very interesting. And a lot of it was just kind of going over updates to their bylaws and some of that boring stuff that we all have to deal with, but it's obviously important to the different organizations. You know, financially speaking, the organization is doing very well. They did pay off the loan, as you all might recall from last year that we helped participate in. It looks as though our dues are going to remain relatively flat, uh, compared to last year with a little bit of a reduction. Due to the calculation they used to come up with that. Uh, we have heard from a variety of different presentations. One of which, one of which is in regards to the Wyoming Semi-Quincentennial Task Force, yes, another task force. That the governor's put together in regards to the celebration of. The 250th year since the initial signing of the Declaration of Independence. That'll be coming up obviously in 2026. So they're in the process of planning for that and. Different funding mechanisms that may be pertinent to the different areas like ours throughout the state, so. That'll be interesting to see what happens with that. They did mention too about the Congressional Tour, spoke a little bit about that, I think in the last meeting to you all. This year, there is one in Sublet County, next year it's going to be hosted here in Sweetwater County. And so it was encouraged that we attend that to kind of get an idea as far as what goes into the planning process with that. I've never been to one, I'm not sure if you have Commissioner Tomlin, but it sounds like it's very beneficial to get, you know, different congressional staffers here. To showcase what's important to us within the region and certainly within Sweetwater County, so. I'll get more information on that as we prepare. Obviously, it's going to be busy between us hosting Waco and then the Congressional Tour. Lots to showcase and in Sweetwater County, assuming that, uh, it doesn't get locked up with the outcome of the RMP. The final evening with that, they took us to a tour of the Brush Creek Ranch, which was a phenomenal experience. If you ever get the opportunity and you're in the Saratoga area, I would recommend doing that. Very luxurious resort with different things like a greenhouse and creamery and a distillery, which were most of us spent the time, but, uh. It was a nice way to cap the couple day long meeting and. I did express our appreciation to the different counties. There was, of the 23, as you all know, there's a board member from every county on the organization. Um, 20 of the 23 board members were there, so I expressed our appreciation to them all for their support with the RMP process. As well as to, you know, the organization and MICA for all the, their work on the comprehensive review and. And certainly the assistance they offered Commissioner Jones and I along the way throughout that process, so. Not much more to report on that. What else do I have? I think that's primarily yesterday, spent a lot of time talking to. Uh, Commissioners and staff in regards to County Road up in the Farson Eden area that we'll be discussing later today. I'm trying to get a better understanding with that. I'll have a county leader's lunch tomorrow, which is with both mayors. That originally was supposed to be last week, but they rescheduled it since I was in Saratoga, so I'll get caught up with. The mayors of both cities. Thursday, I've got an interview with Mark Pedri, who's putting together. Uh, he's kind of a, a local filmmaker that's putting together a story on the Trona industry and the impacts that it has had on Sweetwater and the state of Wyoming, so. I look forward to trying to pretend like I know what I'm talking about. I look forward to trying to pretend like I know what I'm talking about and that. And then as Commissioner Richards stated on Monday, the thirteenth, he and I will be meeting with representatives from Genesis to get an update on some of the things they have going on within their industry. So I believe with that, that's all I have for you this morning, and I would stand for any questions. If not, Commissioner Slaughter, you get the pleasure of repeating everything we've all stated.
Always a fun place to be batting cleanup here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the seventeenth, I attended the 2024 Green River Chamber of Commerce Awards Luncheon. It was an excellent event honoring Green River, the, the Green River business community. The luncheon was hosted at the Hampton Inn, which did an outstanding job on the event. On the eighteenth, I attended the monthly meeting of the Coalition of Local Governments. We held discussion on the new Rocky Mountain Power IRP, the new sage grass plan amendments, Project West and Pacific Trona Dry Creek projects. We also discussed Bridger-Teton National Forest Revision Plan, the Rock Springs RMP, Wild Horse Management Plan, Ashley National Forest Projects, Terra Power, BLM Grazing Revisions, and the EIS Plan for the Jackalope Wind Energy Project. As always, very good information there. A lot of work being put in by the attorney for that staff. Danielle does a great job as she's done for us in getting all of that information out. That afternoon, I had a further discussion with local legislators on the possibility of creating a state park in Sweetwater County. It was the consensus of the group that Fire Hole is the best fit for a potential state park. Other locations we considered included Pioneer Trails Park and the Sand Dunes. We will continue pursuing this concept and report back at a future date. I did receive an email late yesterday that there will be a meeting on this topic this afternoon at two o'clock. So probably will not get to participate in that, but it is ongoing and we will keep everyone apprised. On the twenty-second, I attended the Sage Grass Public Meeting held at White Mountain Library. State and local BLM personnel gave an overview of the proposed Sage Grass Plan Amendments. The draft RMP amendment and the EIS were released, were released on March fifteenth and have a 90-day comment period. Comments are due by June thirteenth. On the twenty-third, I devoted the afternoon to Roma Results-Oriented Management and Accountability Training. This was three hours of video training, which is a three-part training for tripartite board members designed as a planning activity to help in the goal to eradicate poverty in our communities. The training was very specific and gave a unique insight into the issues facing low-income individuals and families at the local and national levels. On the twenty-fourth, I met with Commissioner Richards, Planner Eric Bingham and Attorney Dele, Deputy Attorney Deleone to finalize final requests for the impact assistance on Project West Industrial Sightings application. This was our final step in vetting the requests made under the Sweetwater County umbrella. I think this group has done an outstanding job coordinating this process. I am certain that Commissioner Richards will do an excellent presentation before the Industrial Sightings Council in their hearing, May sixteenth and seventeenth. On the third, I attended the Second Annual Mule Deer Days Event at the Sweetwater County Events Complex. The event was advertised as a weekend of mule deer conservation, coordinated by the Muley Fanatics Foundation. The event included over 50 vendors and had events and seminars geared toward conservation of mule deer and mule deer habitat. Very enjoyable. Spoke, game and fish was prevalent there. I spoke with several of the game and fish members there. Had, had a lot of good topics that were, that were covered and enjoyed it very much. Yesterday, I met with Public Works, excuse me, with Public Works Director Gene Legursky to discuss his monthly report and other issues that are taking place within his department. As usual, our discussion centered around the items that Gene will be presenting to us later today. There are many of those, so I won't go into too much of that. We had a very good discussion as we always do in our end of month discussion. On Thursday, I will have the opportunity to work more within my realm. I've been asked to speak to a group of third graders on what county government is and what a county commissioner does. So I will be at North Park Elementary School talking to a group of third graders about that, which will be very interesting and very fun. Our golden hour senior normal board meeting was changed to this afternoon. And so it will be at four o'clock this afternoon. I will probably not be able to attend it, but if we do get done in time, I will attend that meeting also. With that, I will move on to Gene's end of month report, which we all received late yesterday. Public Works Department, May seventh, 2024, Buildings. The Sweetwater County Library Project is on temporary hold until we receive more information from the state of Wyoming on the requirements for their reimbursement process. Southwest Counseling schematic drawings have been approved by all involved. Plan one is continuing with the next phase of construction drawings. The sewer line at the Green River Courthouse was relined over two separate weekends and is complete. We are waiting for the contractor to provide us with the final project video so that this project can be closed out. The remediation by Blue Sky that was discussed last month is complete at both facilities. Staff is working on putting the bathroom back together at the Rock Springs Youth Home. We had our kickoff meeting for the RTU-AHU project, and they will be coming up for a site visit later this month to verify measurements, airflow and balancing. We should be ready to bid this project in late June or July. Staff is also replacing the tiles in some of the pod showers within the detention facility. They have replaced two total showers with four left to go. We are doing this in phases so we don't disrupt the activities within the facility. The contractors removed some of the settled concrete on the west side of the Green River Courthouse. They will pour the concrete back later in the week when the weather is more favorable. The contractor has also completed the new stair tread on three sets of stairs within the Green River Courthouse. The maintenance crew handled 73 work order requests in April. Roden Bridge. We have been hauling material from the Midland Livestock Pit in Subland County to roads in Farson Eden. We have hauled road base and pit run from this pit to correct poor drainage areas and soft spots on various roadways in the Farson Eden area. Crews are taking advantage of the rain and snow in most of the areas to keep moisture within the roadway and to aid in compaction and blading of the various roadways. County Road number 53, White Mountain Road was finally dry enough to fully open two weeks ago. The same held for County Road number 27, Aspen Mountain Road. However, the snow received on Sunday night may have changed the conditions on Aspen Mountain. Engineering, we are waiting to have the pre-construction meetings for the 2024 paint striping project and the 2024 CMAQ project. All indications by both contractors are that they will be starting later this month. Staff is reviewing the 90% plans for the reconstruction of the first mile of County Road number 23 North and the 50% plans for the reconstruction of pavement of County Road 15, Nine Mile Road. I was able to have a conference call with Representative Stith and Mr. Randall Luthy of the Governor's Office late last week. The call was crucial in the first steps of Sweetwater County applying for WEA road money for these projects. Staff is also reviewing the plans of preparing the front-end bid documentation for County Road number one, McKinnon Road, and its Frostheave project. This project was bid in early June and will have a completion date of, will bid in early June and have a completion date of mid-August before school starts. We are looking into using a lane rental incentive specification to help speed up this project. YDOT has used this lane rental incentive for many years with good results. Parks and Rec, the staff is trying to get all of the park shooting range and archery range ready for the summer season. This is proving difficult because we are only staffed at 33% of our three and six-month worker capacity and are down one out of our three full-time staff members. We ask that the public be patient with us, and if they see any problems, report them to Public Works Department so that the problems can be addressed. That, Mr. Chairman, I'll end my report along with Gene's month-end report and stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate the report. Why do you keep getting all the easy ones with third graders?
It's just all in who you know, Mr. Chairman, you know.
Jealous. Any comments or questions for Commissioner Slaughter's report?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richard.
Just, just one comment. You, you mentioned the possibility of me having to testify. I don't think at this point I will need to testify. I am listed as a witness. Like, as a, as a probably call witness, I, I think is how they have me listed. Eric's gonna carry the weight. They don't want some politician mucking things up. So.
Looks like that's the direction they're going.
On industrial sighting.
Thank you for clarification.
Getting the feedback, commissioners. Well, I would like to report that we are right on time with the agenda. So job well done thus far. The next item is a break, and we're going to take that. We will resume back here in about 15 minutes.
All this meeting back to order where we left off was tab C the beginning of the lengthy. Action and presentation items before us this morning and afternoon and evening commissioners. First up is resolution twenty five oh five P R O one camping within the Pioneer Trails Park. With us this morning is Public Works Director Gene Legursky. Good morning to you, Gene.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Phil. Commissioners and my job is always is to keep you guys ahead of schedule, so it won't be my fault after my stuff's done. Um, what the resolution you have before you is twenty five oh five P R O one and it's camping in Pioneer Trails. If you remember last year, we did a one year test period for camping in Pioneer Trails. Um, we only had one um group camp up there. Um, it was for two nights. Um, it went well. Um, so what I would like to do is make this resolution permanent um with start date of June first of this year, and that way I don't have to come revisit you guys every year uh for this.
Very good. Questions, Commissioners? It's not an entertaining motion to approve resolution twenty five oh five P R O one for camping within the Pioneer Trails Park.
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay? Motion's unanimous. Moving right along. Item number three is change your order number two to the Lagoon Road Reconstruction Project, and we'll hand it back to Gene.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, what you have before you is change order number two to Lagoon Road. This is an interesting change order. It's a final change order for the product project. It's called what is a deductive change order. So what we do at the end of the project typically is we try to reconcile the quantities that were installed. With the bid item quantities and reduce those or increase those accordingly. Um, what this was is a deductive forty four thousand dollar um and change change order um negative. So we actually didn't install all the quantity that was originally thought that we had to, not that the project was done incorrectly. It's just when you estimate a project and put out the thing you typically round numbers up or you say, hey, we're going to use this and then you get out in the field in the real world and you don't need it. Or something like this. So this is a detective change order just to make sure all the quantities match um for not only. Our purposes for auditing, but also for the contractor's purposes.
Always welcome when it's a deductive change order. It's unique. Questions or comments, Commissioners? It's not an entertaining motion to approve the deductive change order number two in the amount of. Forty six thousand, six hundred ninety nine dollars and ninety nine cents and allow the chairman to sign all necessary documents.
Mr. Chairman?
Got a motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
I did.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? Motion's unanimous. Item number four is the award of the two thousand twenty four chip seal project on various county roads. Hand it back to Gene.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is an award for the physically your twenty twenty four chip seal project. Um. What we're going to do is about eighteen and a half miles of road. It's all the mine roads um that we have paid or cracked sealed over the last five, six years. Um, this is part of preventative maintenance plan that we have. The only two mine roads that we're not doing and the ones not a mine road. It's County Road Two. It's old Little America Road. If you guys are familiar where the Tesoro plant is or the back way into Granger. Um, it's that road and then County Road eighty five that goes down to Sol Bay. The reason why we're not doing those is those will be um damaged by the construction and. Um, and everything like that with the plants coming in. So we have money in those um to. Do the pavement preservation on those roads um in that industrial siding. So what we're doing is basically Ta Ta F M C, O C I, County Road eleven. Um, and the uh Shishi Jam Road.
Very good. Questions on the chip seal project, Commissioners? Not an entertaining motion to award the two thousand twenty four chip seal project on various county roads to Intermountain Slurry Seal Incorporated in the amount of one million, two hundred ninety six thousand, one hundred thirteen dollars and forty cents. And allow this chairman to sign all necessary documents.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
I would do that.
Have a second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? Motion's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gene. Next on the action. Presentation items is item number five. We've got the presentation of the viewer report for County Road one twenty four, the Eden East Second North. And with us this morning is Principal. Engineer from Western E G I, Rob Gerard, and good morning, Rob. Thanks for coming over.
Yeah, good morning. So. Want me to begin?
Yeah.
All right.
Sure, sir.
All right, so uh yeah, um. As you guys are aware, you appointed me a viewer um for the vacation. Of the existing right of way for County Road one twenty four uh which is in um Eden. Um. Part of that, I I went out, looked at the site, uh documented the site, took lots of pictures uh that you'll see in in the report. Um, also did a lot of record um. Research um to get the whole history of the property and you'll you'll also see that in the report. I know that report's uh pretty lengthy. It's got a lot of attachments. Uh, attached to it in the backend. Um. Um, met with the property owners out there. Um. They're they're all they're all really nice. Um, good to work with, good to talk to. Um. Some somebody wants the road to be there. Somebody doesn't want the road to be there, but even with their differences, they were they were very polite and. And uh I met with them separately, but none of them had anything bad to say about each other. Um, they're just definitely in disagreeance, but but no, no bad words were said. Um. The road, the right of way does go through an existing pivot through the area. Um, the pivot's been there um since nineteen ninety four. Uh, when it was constructed um as part of the salinity project. Um. So into to reduce salinity, um a bunch of pivots were put in. Um, so. The road no longer exists there. Um. I couldn't find aerial views of it being there before, so I assume that. It may have been constructed, could have been a two track. I'm not sure, but um since nineteen ninety four has not been there. It's been used as a center pivot. Um. So. Mostly it's um just a view to build the road. It would be a a large expense. Um, it does go over a. Canal on the east end, so in order to build a bridge or to put culverts in. Through that canal, it would it would it would be expensive. Um, and also that you do lose some irrigation through the pivot uh for the private owner through there. Um. So other than that, I guess I'm I'm here for any questions you guys may have on it. Um. And thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Um, yeah, very detailed and and lengthy report. I I did just kind of want to give a brief. Explanation on the process when it comes to. The vacation process and because we've moved forward with. You know, hiring a viewer to give us this report, that is one step within the process. We follow state statute, which is statute twenty four three in regards to. Moving forward with this, I think, you know, yesterday I received a few phone calls about. What we we're going to take action on today and how that would, you know, limit the public from being able to speak during your presentation and things along those lines. And so I just wanted to. Point out that, you know, if we agree with the the viewers' report and we want to move forward with the intent to vacate. So if we, you know, our next item on the agenda, if we approve moving forward with that, that does not mean that the road is then immediately vacated. It actually kicks off. The public process and and starts the time in regards to the thirty day clock and at that time the public can weigh in on. You know, their concerns and you know, give us more time to kind of. I guess hear everyone's side within that, much like you've done. Um, if it determines that more time is needed, I believe we have the authority to extend that, but. It's not until it goes through that public commenting process that any action would be taken on the final determination on the vacation or not. And so. Um, if we don't want to move forward with the intent, and obviously it would die today, um. That's kind of where we're at the process. So I just wanted to maybe help explain that to some of those individuals that may have some concerns with whichever direction may be taken up here. With that, Commissioners, are there any questions for Rob in regards to the viewers' report?
I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Jones?
So. Had a a visit yesterday which prompted these questions, and so I want to make sure that. We we all understand. Uh, one of the the points that was brought up to me is how then will the Bureau of Reclamation land? And the northern portion of the Miller land be accessed if this road is vacated?
Mm hmm. Okay, so currently there is no road there, so it's not being accessed through there. It hasn't been accessed since nineteen ninety four. Um, there's a there is a fence across it. There's also the pivot across it, like I said. Um. So nobody has been going to the Bureau of Rec land through there other than if they jumped the fence and walked. Um, and as far as the northern part of the Miller. Um. They uh they are not landlocked. They do have public access off of the existing county road that is there. Um. So they do have a way of getting there. Um, there is a canal that goes across there. Um, currently it's got a bridge. That goes across that canal on the eastern end of of this uh. County Road one twenty four. Um, it's, you'll you'll see the photos in the report. It's a. It's it's not a very well maintained bridge, uh has no safety guard rails on the sides. Um. So. Is currently, they don't really have an access. They do have the the public right of way, but there is no road across there, so. I would say the Millers would would have to enter onto their property, which does have access to a public right of way. And as far as the Bureau of Rec, I'm not sure what accesses do exist on the eastern ends or the northern ends. That was well beyond my scope.
I think that's one of the concerns is the access. Uh, what it would be in the future. Also considering the fact that who knows what B L M is going to do, right? We don't know what's going to happen with the R M P.
Mm hmm.
And if you were to come in from the northeast and follow the canal down, that crosses private property twice, it looks like. So that access could be closed off to the public. So that then. So that then would essentially landlock the Bureau of Reclamation land. And also the northern portion of the Miller land, if I understand it right. The northern portion of the Miller land that's on the other side of the canal because that bridge is not really usable.
Correct.
I think that that those are those are the concerns, some of the concerns that were expressed to me anyway. Um, also what that does to the property value of the Miller property was was brought up. Supposedly that there's a letter out there somewhere uh, describing how the property value would be decreased. I haven't seen that letter, so I don't.
Yes, and I have seen a letters from a real estate agent. Wasn't necessarily from an appraiser. It was kind of just an opinion of the real estate agent.
When was that road installed, do you know? Like, I think that was in your report, but I can't remember off the top of my head.
So I do not know when it was installed. I do know when the right-of-way was given. Whether the road was installed at that time, I am not for certain. Pull it up here real quick. So in nineteen fifty-nine, the United States of America uh, sold the property to Vern McMurray and Ella McMurray. And then a few day or a couple of weeks after that, in nineteen fifty-nine, that would be July twenty-eighth, nineteen fifty-nine, the United States of America granted Sweetwater County that right-of-way. For that, the United States sold it to Vern and Ella McMurray. It did make mention that there was some right-of-ways in the works and that they would still be part of that property. So even though that property sold two weeks before, there was still a process going on where those right-of-ways were being given. Like I said, I don't know if it was ever constructed at that time or not.
I just think that was one of the biggest concerns was access both to Bureau of Reclamation land or lack of, I guess I should say, and lack of access to the northern portion of the Miller property. Which there wouldn't be any then, correct?
For the Bureau of Rec, there is not from that side. I think that there's opportunities for look for another right-of-way to go to those properties. They would not necessarily be going through the center pivot or line up with existing roads out there, but that's kind of beyond what this is.
Yeah, this is obviously a a no-win situation. Because there's parties on both sides that obviously affect their their land. And I know originally when some of this was brought forth, that there was an idea that there may be a willingness to work together towards, I believe it was the northern portion of the McMurray property there to see if, you know, the road could be put in there where you'd still have access to the Millers land. Uh, my understanding is that's off the table, so to speak, and so it basically leaves us with the idea of vacating a road that doesn't even exist. And I believe the Miller family is utilizing that irrigation canal to get to their property, but it weaves in and out of McMurrees and their property. And so, you know, as an individual landowner, you have the right to shut that down. And so I think there's a fear that that will be the case. And so I without installing a new road, I don't know how we ever win in this situation. I'm I'm curious to see if, you know, there there could be more compromise that can help everyone. Obviously, that's the easier route, but and perhaps if we move forward with this intent, that'll provide some opportunity to, you know, during that public commenting process, but I just think it's unfortunate that we gotta come back and put it on the commissioners to decide to vacate a road that doesn't even exist. Then it creates a bit of an uproar in the area, so.
Yeah, my my job's definitely much easier than your guys'.
Additional feedback, commissioners?
Well, I would just like to reach out to the McMurray family and Miller family. If you two parties could work this out amongst yourselves, it would be a whole lot healthier for everybody, and we wouldn't have to make hard decisions. It's hard for me to sit here, because I don't want to be taking sides, but Bob McMurray had me in the pickup, and the girls were there, and he agreed to move the road along his fence from the middle of the pivot to the end of the property and around the fence so that Millers could get to that piece of property. So I would just like to put it back on the parties to try to work it out. I mean, we still will have a public process. Maybe we'll have to make the final decision, but there needs to be access back there somehow. We need to figure out something. It'd be better if the landowners figured it out, is my message to you.
Any other comments, Commissioner Slaughter?
Mr. Chairman, um, Rob, I'd like I'd like to refer to the bottom of page four of your report. And the the first area is the access to public lands. And this is probably fairly redundant, because I'm speaking to the same issue that Commissioner Jones was alluding to. But basically, the road has not been used since nineteen ninety-four. We all realize that. If a road were to be reestablished, it would provide access to that seven acres that is questionable area. Basically, it's a triangle on the northern end of the Miller property. And it would also provide access to the two sections, basically, of Bureau of Rec land that that are over there. So, you know, I I think that's an important point to take into consideration with respect to this. You know, obviously, the cost of doing that is very high, but something we need to look at. And then the next section where it's it states the creation of landlocked parcels, property is owned by the Miller Land Company, currently has fringe to CR one thirty-four. The vacation of CR one twenty-four would not cause any private properties to be landlocked. I think that is a little bit misleading, because I think that that seven-acre parcel is at this point in time landlocked if we move forward with the vacation. Uh, or at at least it's very difficult to access without going around through the north and coming in.
Yes.
Direction or something.
It is one piece of property that does have the canal that goes through it. There is a an existing bridge through there. Is it's a little questionable. I don't think I would want to drive across to it very much.
I went out and looked at it. I wouldn't drive my side-by-side across it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And so I guess, you know, they you could put private bridges across there so they can get through to their property. And so looking at this, building this road through there, I'm looking at, in order for them to be able to get to their property, the um, from that northern part to their southern part, they are going to need a bridge. Also, that right-of-way appears to go through the canal. And so then the county would then have to construct a bridge that kind of leads to nowhere. It'd just be the open public space at that point. And so and it's just.
Yeah, I under I understand. Just I think it was just a point that needed to be made, that that's where some of the the issues have arisen from some of the residents out in that area. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions, commissioners? Okay, well, Rob, we appreciate the viewer's report and for coming to present it this morning.
Yep, no problem.
This is gonna move us right along into item number six, under the action and presentation items, commissioners. We've got before us a resolution for the notice of intent to vacate County Road one twenty-four, Eden East Second North Road that we've obviously just been discussing. Rejoining us is Public Works Director Gene Magersky, and welcome back, Gene.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and as the chairman said, this is the process laid out by state statute. Right now, we're in basically step seven of twelve. Um, and what this is, is this this decision by you guys takes us down one of two forks. Um, and the best way to describe it is if you guys accept and pass the notice of intent to vacate right now, uh, what happens is the public comment period kicks off. Uh, public comment period, I believe we have in there through June sixth or tenth on the book, just like I highlighted it. June tenth, um, those have to be written, uh, into the county clerk's office. Uh, that can be extended by you guys. If we see an overwhelming uh, majority of people that, you know, have stuff, you guys can extend that. It's a thirty-day minimum, um, is what the state statute says. Um, so that basically kicks off the public comment period, and we go down that route. If you guys decide not to pass the notice of intent to vacate, it stops right here. Um, and what happens is you guys say that you don't agree with the petitioners, you don't agree with the viewer's report, um, and you want it to stop. And basically, what that is, is it doesn't allow public comment. I think that all of you guys are very been very transparent. I know you guys have said that over and over again. My personal opinion, uh, would be to let this go into the intent to notice of vacate. The whole reason why it's worded as an intent of notice to vacate is because that's the petition we got. We got a vacation petition. If this was a, hey, build the road petition, you guys would be looking at an intent to build a road. Um, so that's all the wording. So I know there's been a lot of stuff out there in the public, and I've got a lot of questions. I'm sure you guys have got a lot of questions. What happens after this? Basically, what this does, it it opens the public comment period um, so that we can follow through with the rest of of the Wyoming State statute. So that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Gene. Appreciate that. Any questions for Gene regarding the process or the resolution, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
So so we could adopt this this, uh, resolution today and extend that public comment period through this resolution, or we could extend it later, either.
Either or.
Either one. Uh, my my personal feeling on this is we should go forward with this intent to vacate, because I because I want to hear what the public has to say. I I wouldn't feel comfortable shutting it down right now. There's a there's a good process in place that gives us the opportunity to hear from everybody involved. Not just not just individually through private meetings, but through public comment and and get the get the entire story rather than snippets from from here and there. Um, so my my personal feeling is that we should we should adopt this resolution.
Any other thoughts, commissioners?
I'd I agree. I'd love to get this out into the here from the public. I think that's probably a key step. And by the only way we can really make a reasonable decision figure out who's gonna be mad, I guess. That's that's gonna end up, unfortunately, somebody isn't gonna like what happens, but at least we deal with all the information we can gather.
Mr. Slaughter?
Mr. Chairman, I agree. I I think by moving forward with the vacation process, it gives us the opportunity to hear from the public. And I think that's critical with respect to this. I I think we will hear different interpretations of of what we have seen here, and then ultimately it will come down to our decision on that point in time. But I I want to hear, you know, all sides of the story, and I think this is our opportunity to do that.
Yeah, I'm in agreement there. And for the public that may be watching, the viewer's report is about a hundred and seventy-three pages, so that was gonna be a little bit difficult to try and scroll through during Rob's report, but it is available on the county website in our packet. You know, I I support the idea of public comment and trying to learn all sides to the story before making an informed decision. So I I think it's the next best step. And again, it is just the intent to vacate as part of that process. And you know, I I know it can be difficult when it comes to individual land ownership and, you know, trying to find a solution that works for all, but I I would encourage you any of those disputes to work together and try and find a solution that doesn't involve politicians making that for you. Um, no one wants government in their life until they need them. And I I think, you know, there's an opportunity there to solve this for everyone. And so I would encourage that cooperation within this process, and hopefully, you know, we can get through it without having to play one side or the other, so. Any other feedback?
Mr. Chairman, I would just throw out to the parties involved that you might want to consider the Department of Vag mediation process to find another solution. Uh, vacating the road is probably a a given. You know, we all understand that there's no road through there right now, but if you could come up with an agreeable solution, other people aren't gonna come up with it for you. So Bridger Faces is here today, if you, you know, if you guys would like to visit with him about the mediation process a little bit, he can help you with that. It might be a way to to solve the process and give an answer to the commissioners without us having to come up break in and access somewhere else. That would be, if you could find a win-win, that would be the best for the valley, for all of you.
Okay, commissioners, before you is the resolution. I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number twenty-four oh five EN zero one for the notice of intent to vacate County Road one twenty-four, Eden East Second North as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? Motion's unanimous. Moving right along in at item number seven, we've got discussion of allowing the Public Works Department to start advertising for qualified construction manager at risk firms, CMAR, for the Public Works Combined Facility, and we'll hand it back to Gene.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, what this is, and I think in your packet, uh, I sent you guys a memo of kind of my reasoning behind this, uh, and talking with different CMA CMAR firms, um, around the state. In August, seems like there's a good break for everybody where they don't have enough work or they can move other work around. And as all of you know, we had bid this project by hard bid method. It came in, we had one bidder. It came in extremely over budget. Um, throughout that process, we found out different things that we had specified for reasonings, um, that I felt were good. Um, one specific thing is the generators. We use Cummings generators all over the county. We bring up Cummings to do all of our power stuff, all of our services on that stuff, and it makes it easy. They service all of our generators. It was brought up that if we use a Generact generator, that we could save a ton of money. That was not like that, because we had specified something in there. And when you do a hard bid, it's really hard, and I don't mean that as a pun. It's very hard to submit an ad alternate at that time. Um, through the CMAR process, what that allows us to do is look at qualified firms, take on qualif- a qualified firm, and then they are responsible through the guaranteed maximum bid price um, to select what's best. And what happens with that is if they see something creeping outside of their budget, they can bring proposals back to us. And then we can make an educated decision to see if that's really that important. If the branded generator is that important. Um, you know, a couple of the other things through that is we have a thirteen-and-a-half-inch concrete floor in there, um, that is double matted rebar that I think can be ground down. When the contractor looked at it, he said, no, that whole thing's got to get jackhammered out and report. You know, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars versus one point one million. You know, why does that have to be? You know, let's let's actually talk about that when it's a hard bid, you can CMAR. However, you know, you guys have alluded to the airport project. I have not been involved in a CMR project. Um, and talking to other people that have, they think it is a very good process. There is exemptions in every project where they don't go well. Um, the Justice Center is one that was a CMA pro- uh, CMAR project, um, that I think went very well. A lot of that has to do with my staff. We have a varied, um, a lot of varied people in the staff that have a lot of different expertise that'll visit the site everywhere and pick up stuff and and have open communication with contractors to see that. Um, and I think that's a very, um, important component, um, in the CMAR process, is to be able to have those um, policies or the people in place to be able to look at stuff and go, hey, this doesn't look right. What are we doing here? Stuff like that every day. Um, as you know, most architects um, by their contract and stuff, do not show up on the project that often, you know, a couple of times a month, once a week, maybe. Um, so it's very important for the people on staff and on site to be out there every day and looking at stuff. So the reason I'd like to do this is to get this to kick off in August, because it seems like there's a good time we can get multiple people. In order to do that, we have to advertise it. We have to take in their stuff, review it, get into a contract, and do all that stuff. Um, I know we're going through budget time right now, and it puts you guys in kind of a, hey, are we awarding this project already? You guys aren't. Um, I think there's a lot of stopgap measures in there to say if your guys' funding's down and you don't think the Nigel Tool capital project is worth it, that we can stop it before we ever enter in a contract. That's why it's in August. Um, so I think that gives you guys, that's my personal opinion on that, that gives you guys enough leeway to be able to stop this. So I think that gives you guys, that's my personal opinion on that. That gives you guys enough leeway to be able to stop this. So I don't think you guys are committing to anything here other than a timeline that, hey, we can start advertising this because we have to advertise it, you know, for three consecutive weeks. We have to give them time to prepare everything, you know, really before we get anything back, we're in the end of June. And by the time we review C M A R starts talking to people and stuff like that, we're in July. You know, most people look at this and we're like, oh, man, it's springtime. Construction projects, we're already looking out in August, September right now, you know, and really trying to fit stuff in. So that's what I'm asking is for you guys to be okay with the timeline. I didn't want to surprise anybody by putting this out without discussing with you, and I'm open to questions.
Thanks, Gene. Appreciate that information. Questions for Gene on the C M A R process commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment.
Mr. Slaughter?
This is something that Gene and I have discussed fairly extensively through our meetings. I know that this process has been used. Now, the hospital is using it for their lab project. And I, I think it's something that makes sense moving forward for us. I think we should accept the advice that we're being given from our facilities coordinator, and we should move forward with this construction manager at risk at this time.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any other thoughts?
Chairman.
Commissioner Richards?
I, I gotta agree. I, the hard bid clearly didn't bring us what we wanted. This is a, this is a good process to move forward and, and, and it doesn't tie our hands. Gives us good options. So I, I, I support going forward to this.
As do I.
So far it's working well with the lab at the hospital. So it's definitely a, a good process as an option.
With that commissioners, I would entertain a motion to approve the public works department to start advertising for qualified construction manager at risk firms for the public works combined facility as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards.
Any further discussion?
Slowing down for my man to take her there.
It'll happen. Hang on, Gene. It'll happen.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse nay. Motion's unanimous.
Well, good chair, huh?
Thanks, Gene. Appreciate that. Item number eight commissioners is a McKinnon Road discussion and planning for County Road number one, and our presenters are two of our very own, Commissioner Slaughter and Richards. Or is whoever wants it.
I defer to my senior friend down at the end.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I, the, the purpose for having this on the agenda today is basically as a follow-up. We had the discussion at our last meeting. We had the presentation of the County Road number one analysis. As previously was stated, our public works director and his assistant, along with Commissioner Richards and I, went down to McKinnon gave the information to the citizens down there on what had been advised through our analysis. And I think there were some real significant and, and very viable questions that, that arose from that. And so one of the things that Commissioner Richards and I talked about after the fact was we felt like it would be appropriate to form a small working group with some residents of that area to go out and look at what we're proposing in future years with respect to that analysis. So what, what our intent currently is, as we've spoken about previously, is this year, our public works department is going to go out and work on those frost heaves and we are going to do that work. Next year, the, the intent is to do a scrub seal on the second segment of that road. And then the, what are the question came in is what we were going to do with the balance of that road, starting with year three. And our public works director had some different ideas. I, I think what wasn't conveyed or was maybe not understood by everyone in the room, and, and I'll speak of myself included, was exactly what those road bases are and what we would be looking at. So one of the things I would like for this small group to do is get together, set a time with our facilities director to go out and look at exactly what these processes are, what the road bases are. And so that we have better information to convey to the residents of that area as we're moving through this project. So we would like to continue obviously working with that analysis. It was something that we put a lot of money into to try and get it done right. We want to get that road done correctly. And we believe that the best way to do that would be to form this working group to, once again, try and inform everyone to the best of our abilities, what these further projects could be. See, Mark and Stephanie Anderson are both here today. I had talked with Stephanie, let her know we were going to be discussing this today. She told me she would get hold of Mark. I think they would be very good as members of this committee there. And I would suggest what we try and do is have maybe two or three people from their community to work with Commissioner Richards, myself and our public works department over the next few weeks to go out and look at some of these projects and develop a little bit more of a plan that we can bring back for further work to be done under that analysis on County Road one.
Thanks, Commissioner. I, it seems like you and Commissioner Richards are buddying up a lot and that's bringing me a little bit of concern. So I just want to let you know that.
Well, somebody else, if somebody else would step up and take on these projects.
Well, I'm stuck with Mary, so I guess that leaves Taylor.
I'm a little worried too, because we had three weeks in between our last meetings and I didn't get to see him very much. So I, I was feeling a little down, but.
Well, you didn't, you didn't show up to the hearing, so.
I was invited, but I, I was told the head to stay home because two of you were already going.
No, I think it's good. I mean, I, I think you all have been very proactive and you know, through the study and trying to find resolutions and taking time to go down there. Working with Gene and staff and, you know, I, I realize it's been an ongoing issue that you know, you could argue hasn't had the attention it deserves. And so I think the proactive approach, you know, should be recognized. And I commend both of you and staff for your efforts there. And I hope you know, that area feels the same. I know there's a lot of animosity down there in regards to it, but we are working on it. So, you know, I think that shows something. And if you're willing to continue on and help, you know, with the education of the process, then, you know, by all means, I'm, I'm good with that. So that's my two cents.
Mr. Slaughter, I'm not sure the next couple of weeks makes a lot of sense, but I think this is something we could accomplish over the next one to two months, I'm sure.
I would agree. And, and I think, you know, the, the goal will be to try and get something set up so that we can get out and look at these things. And, and certainly we, we want to do it in a timely fashion. I don't think that is something that needs to be done today. You know, I, I mean, I, I see the perspective from the landowners down there. They're driving that road every day and it is an issue. But I think if they see that we are working towards this and are trying to do so in a timely fashion, that there'll be some benefit there. So I, I guess the next step would be, you know, just having the approval of the commission to move forward, set up a small working group. We'll all make the connections with Stephanie and Mark to try and get that and get a time set up sometime in the next few weeks so that we can get out and do that. And then as that, as that group evolves, we'll see what takes place with respect to that.
You okay with that, Mr. Legursky?
I'm fine. Just here to answer any questions, but I want to point out it's, we're supposed to be talking to this at eleven oh five.
We're doing pretty good.
Five, so we're, I'm trying to help you guys out.
We appreciate that. I'm good. Everyone good with that approach? Sounds like it. Thanks very much, gentlemen. Appreciate your work.
We could trail a herd of sheep down that road, smooth it right out.
Good with going early, Christina? We're ahead of schedule. Are you good with going early? Okay. Do we need Andy, Gene? No? Okay. Next on the agenda is item number nine. We've got a request to ratify the Wyoming Federal Lands Access Program Proposed Project Endorsement Form for the McKinnon Road, County Road one. Joining us this morning is County Grants Manager Christina Marshell, along with Gene. And good morning to you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We are going to continue the love towards County Road number one. So Sweetwater County Public Works Department recently submitted an application for funds under the Federal Lands Access Program or FLAP, as we like to say in the grants world. Its goal is to improve transportation facilities that provide access to or, or are adjacent to or located whether, within federal lands. In most cases, the project should be no farther than ten miles from the federal lands. Preferences given to transportation facilities that, one, provide access to federal high-use recreation sites and two are economic generators. There is approximately ten point three million dollars available in Wyoming's FLAP program. So Sweetwater County's FLAP app, application addresses severely deteriorated pavement and safety concerns on the first six point two miles on County Road one. This segment accesses two federal wilderness city areas or W S As as well as Cedar Mountain. The road also ties into the Flaming Gorge, Green River Basin scenic highway designated All-American Road. So Sweetwater County Travel and Tourism states that the Flaming Gorge area attracts seventy-two percent of the visitors to Sweetwater County, which is the second most important industry to the local economy. So the project budget is two point one one million dollars. Although there is no required grant match, nine hundred and ten thousand dollars is earmarked in the county's road fund to commensurate with a non FLAP level of usage. That, that just basically means it's not all tourists using that road. So in the budget, I've mentioned that it is to provide a stabilized full-depth reclamation or F D R with chip seal. Some notes, this work was identified in that road rehabilitation study, County Road number one, that you just discussed with Gene Legursky, Public Works Director. And so it justifies the need for the project. Sweetwater County also actively encouraged resident input on this grant application by holding a public hearing on April second of this year. And as you previously mentioned, you held a town hall meeting in McKinnon with the residents. Fortunately, the chairman signed the proposed project endorsement form outside of a regularly scheduled meeting because the application was due last week. So with that, I've included in your packet the form, also the request for project applications with the U S Department of Transportation. I'm happy to answer any other questions or the direct, the public works director is here as well. And with that, I'm just asking for you to ratify the form.
Thanks, Christina. Very detailed as usual. Questions on this? Proposed endorsement ratification, commissioners?
Well, but I would be willing to make the motion to ratify if you're ready for that.
Absolutely.
To ratify the Wyoming Federal Lands Access Program Proposed Project Endorsement Form for McKinnon Road, County Road number one.
Do you have a motion to ratify by Commissioner Toman? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posse nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Christina.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Question though for Gene, that goes to the fixing the frost heaves, this portion of the funding.
This portion of the funding doesn't have anything to do with the frost heaves. I already have a million dollars aside in this, like this current year budget to fix the frost heaves. And put in another million dollars in to fix other things down.
Okay. So when's this money spent?
Six or point seven, whenever we get it.
Oh, okay. So we've got like three years of.
We're trying here.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, one, one point two, one point five million in fuel tax. I believe, right, for the next couple of years.
And fuel tax for all of the county roads.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda commissioners is item number ten. We are about thirty minutes ahead of schedule here. We do have Bridger with us as, as well as Darryl Roethlisberger from the University of Wyoming Extension Office. To provide a general overview on the UW Extension County relationships and current Sweetwater relationship as a background for discussion on the M O U space and personnel. As you all might recall, our last meeting, we did table a compensation agreement. So before we begin this discussion, I would entertain a motion to remove the annual employment compensation agreement for Darryl Roethlisberger for the remainder of the current fiscal year off the table.
It's moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse nay. Motion is unanimous. At this time, I'd hand it over to you, Bridger. Good morning, gentlemen.
I'm Bridger Fates, Associate Director with the University of Wyoming Extension. Wanted to get started before Commissioner Toman volunteered me for any other jobs this morning.
Kind of make you, are you keep a little bit? Does it work? Do you think it's going to work?
I don't know. We'll see about that. But again, Lucy Polly with the State of Wyoming is really a great mediator and has experience in those sorts of issues. And, and that's who I directed them to. So. All right. So here to, you know, I know they had some questions last time and, and we've had some sort of lingering discussions about space and, and personnel. So I wanted to talk a little bit about those today. And address any, any of those questions. And then there was also some questions along the lines of, of budget. And I had a good discussion with your clerk yesterday. I think we can, we can resolve those in terms of how we expend funds and that relationship and, and just offered to, to meet with with her as well as Darryl and Tracy, who's our business manager in the office and then myself and just kind of go through and, and make sure we understand sort of best practices, how you'd like us to, to manage those funds and how to, to interact. So I think she was definitely receptive to that as well. So I think that's the, that's the steps forward to, to sort of resolve those individual budget item questions, I think. So if, if you're good with that, we can proceed that way. In terms of the questions on the annual compensation agreement, the numbers are slight, are slightly different. They're higher than the previous educator's position. When we conducted the interview, it was clear that, that Darryl was not a new educator starting. He had a lot of experience and that we wanted to rely on that experience to get Sweetwater County up and, and running like we would like to see it in terms of the four H program and extension. So Darryl did bring a little more to the table than our previous educator. We talked with Commissioner Toman at the interview, asked her if, if she thought the commissioners would be amenable to a little more salary if somebody like Darryl with the experience. We probably should have followed that up with a, a more formalized discussion before we presented you with the compensation agreement. But that was, that's what led us to those slightly different numbers. I think in terms of the impacts, we are definitely already seeing that. I think the community members are starting to see there's a difference between what Darryl's willing to do for the community and four H and what our previous four H educator was doing. So I think the value is there. Just that, that's, that's how we got there on the, on the salary agreement. Any, any questions for me on the salary agreement before we move on to other items?
Yeah. So I mean, with that inflated salary, is that still going to? Is that still within your budget for the remainder of this year that we originally agreed to?
So it's in the overall budget. If you look at the salary line items themselves, we are going to come over about fourteen hundred just in salary, but we, but there's some other funds that were not expended because of having a vacant position that, that would cover that. So in terms of the current budget, it will not change the current overall budget number.
Yeah, I, I.
The, well, and I would just add in the bigger impact on the budget was not actually Darryl's salary. It was that our I, our previous county coordinator, four H educator, asked our office administrator if she was using her benefits. And she said, well, I. And she said, well, I don't access the university benefits all the time. I use some of my husband's benefits. So the 4H educator took that to mean that she could take the benefits out of the salary compensation in your budget. Which we all know you cannot just remove people's benefits from a budget. So if you look at the reason our budget, uh so our budget did go down from last year's budget um because she removed roughly fourteen thousand dollars in benefits that 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 uh you know, as an employee, you are, you have the right to receive benefits from your employment and so that that's that's the greater impact to the salary line item that we're dealing with. And the reason why this next year's budget looks like it's grown again, it hasn't actually grown. It has grown from this current budget that you're looking at, but if you look at the previous budgets, it has not grown as much. Marty had just removed those benefits from the salary line item when she submitted the budget to you last year.
So.
It's an uncomfortable situation to be in, but yeah.
It seems like, you know, I I'm only a year and a half in, so I'm trying to learn with different fingers of this job, but this UW Extension and obviously you guys had some struggles with different personnel and whatever last year, but it just seems like we we can't get everything organized. And so there's an employment agreement that has an increased salary and poor Daryl gets caught in the middle of that trying to present it last time.
Yep.
And you know, we've got an MOU that we had troubles getting signed. We've got other you know, you've got a horticulture position that we pay for that we don't have an employment agreement with.
I can give you the background on that one.
Yeah, and it 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 just seems like we need to improve this process and certainly improve the relationship, and I'm confident we can. Daryl seems like a great guy and I think he'll pick up the piece as well. But there's all these moving parts and then, you know, we get met with a twenty percent budget increase coming forth for fiscal year twenty-five and you know, we're going off of an MOU that wasn't signed, so it was a current practice or not. You know, there's an increase in compensation that we're not clued in on and evidently Commissioner Toman was, but you know, we
Take it easy there.
Well, I mean, that's that's what we're learning here. But I mean, if it's a liaison to, you know, UW Extension or whatever the case is, but this kind of back and forth and all over the place isn't effective for either party. And so I would like to, you know, find some common ground where we can have everything, you know, up to speed. I mean, we're almost through the fiscal year and we just barely got a copy of the of the signed MOU last Friday, so it's a little bit frustrating trying to connect all the dots when there's all these moving pieces and then you got different titles for different positions and there's not any con- consultation on you know, what works best for Sweetwater County as far as those positions that we're paying for, so.
So I'm, yeah, I'm prepared to have that discussion today too. So I agree, and I think some of that is the way that the the extension model works is we have local folks in the community that are our county coordinators. And I I I hate to sort of lay blame on an individual because it's it is somewhat of a system uh issue, but when when we have an educator that wasn't sort of meeting those county coordinator responsibilities and keeping you in the loop um and and having those sorts of discussions. I guess we can, we see the the challenges it creates. So I I do I am confident moving forward with Daryl as the county coordinator, someone who has experience and has been a county coordinator in other extension systems before and has experience working with Commissioners um that we won't see those sorts of issues moving forward and and that a lot of those those sort of misconnection activities were really the responsibility of that county coordinator to clue in the university and you as well, so that that keeps us. I mean, that's the role of that county coordinator is to play that liaison uh between the county and the and the university. So I'm hoping that um just that change improves a lot of those things. I'm not willing to just let that be the end. Like I said, I do want to meet with with the clerk. I'd also um offer that to to meet with um Mr. De Leon to um to address some of those concerns that he's brought up so that we can all get on the same page. And I think like I said, I think Daryl's the right person to a- as the county coordinator to really lead that and and make that happen. So I that's my, that's our plan anyway going forward. In terms of the position, um we are, we have uh some opportunities to fill that position. Um I think from our perspective, we did seek the county Commissioners uh input on what that position should be. And then I also looked at um past experience with those positions to come up with the community vitality and health position as the right fit for for Sweetwater County, but I'm gonna explain sort of the background as to why I made that decision, but if but today, at the end of the day, I'm gonna ask you to 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 give me direction in which position you would like. So the Ag and Natural Resource Position or the Community Vitality and Health Position are on the table today. We're happy to move forward with either one. Um I'll just give you some background real quick, so you'll know where we got there. So um and I can throw in the horticulture position as well in terms of why that exists the way it exists um and why there wasn't a salary agreement in the in the past. So going back the long, there's been two long-term successful extension educators in Sweetwater County during my time in the last twenty years of extension. Uh one was Nina Romero, who was a community uh vitality and health specialist. She was sort of a traditional community health specialist where she had some economic development skillsets and uh some health skillsets. At at when she resigned and retired from extension, uh we came to the Commissioners at that time and they said that they wanted an ag agent. Um so we had multiple searches for an ag agent. We finally were able to fill that uh with a with a ambitious young uh ag agent. They only were here in Sweetwater County for a year, just weren't able to establish a program and moved on. At that time, we re-engaged the Commissioners as to where we should go and we and it was agreed to go back to that community vitality and health emphasis. Josie Ibera, Josephina Ibera, who uh many of you know, she's still part of your community. She worked for the hospital. She's a registered dietitian, does great things for the community. She did great things for UW Extension for for several years. She was sort of the uh she was the the glue that kept everything together and we didn't sort of have these uh sort of discussions that I've happened to have today because she kept things on track with the Commissioners at the time, did a great job. Uh at the end of that, that's when we came back to you and and asked you uh were you, well, it wasn't this commission, it was the commission that was here previously. So Commissioner Toman would be the only one that was on that commission. We asked what direction at that time. It was our understanding, we wanted to move forward again with the community vitality and health specialists, but if it's if Ag and Natural Resource makes more sense, we're we're okay with that. Just wanted to let you know, that's kind of the history and why why we moved towards CBH. And we did uh we did meet, I met with Mc- uh is it Mc- Michaela with the uh Sweetwater Economic. So we met with some individuals to see if there is a need. We didn't just come up with the CBH position. So we talked to Commissioners, we talked to stakeholders. Um but again, willing to 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 move on that issue. In terms of the horticulture position, it was traditionally, I don't know how long that horticulture position's been in Sweetwater County because it predated my twenty years of experience where it was a part-time position. Back seventeen years ago, eighteen years ago, when the when the budget was zeroed out here in Sweetwater County and we rebuilt the program, uh the horticulture position was removed um from there. So there was not a hortica- uh a part-time horticulturist. After about four or five years, the Commissioners actually came to us and asked that we reinstate a horticulture position because all of those questions that she gets don't go away when we don't have a position. They go to somebody else in the county, to the Weeden Past or the Conservation Districts or wherever. So that person provides a service for the county and and the county came to us and asked us to re-add that position back in. So that's that's the history of that position as well and and just another quick tidbit in terms of why there weren't salary agreements for that position. The horticulture position and the administrative uh position were both uh not too long ago, county employees. So county fund, county paid county employees. At the time, the commission had uh concerns with having county employees supervised by University of Wyoming employees. So they asked to change their employment status from county employees funded by the county to University of Wyoming employees funded by the county. Um so it just, we just moved forward with those contracts. We didn't create separate employment contracts when we when we did that, similar to the way the 4H educator position is, which has always been more of a partnership than than. So at least from my understanding, it was more about supervision than it was the funding structure of those of those employees.
Yeah, I guess I just brought it up because I believe it's the administrative assistant, there's
Right.
An employment agreement, but there's not with the other position. So then in presenting Daryl's before us, I'm just kind of trying to understand all the different moving parts and I, you know, I can't speak to what was done before us, which is why, you know,
Yep.
I don't mean to sound critical, I'm trying to learn too, but then you have specialists too, and horticulture is one of those, and those can be you know, an oper- their salaries and operating expenses are funded by a mix of federal and state funds. And so then we have a local horticulture position here that we are funding. It's not a specialist. I mean, it's just, there's so many moving parts. It's confusing. It's be trying to connect the dots here and I it just seems like there's a lot going on with that our knowledge, but from what you're telling me, there has been consultation with the previous administration and so.
Yeah, all of those decisions were made with discussions with Commissioners.
So the need, rather than to just utilize a specialist, I assume the specialists were traveling around the state to different counties.
Right, so the specialist, yeah, our state. The definition sort of that we use for specialists, there's there's somebody that has a statewide assignment. So they they cover the whole state, but they're really there to support the counties. So you know, like your your current part-time horticulture assistant, she utilizes the state master gardener specialist to teach the master gardener programs to the folks in Sweetwater County. She she helps facilitate that, bring them to the classes, help helps them work to get, they do forty hours of community service here in Sweetwater County when they go through that program. So those specialists really work to support local educators. Um they also can do some direct uh uh support and education with members of the community throughout the state as well, but their their assignment is a statewide assignment.
So we don't have to sign last, we have to sign last year's agreement.
Yeah, we need to, we need
Because we approved it, but we just, nobody ever signed anything, right?
Right. And then the salary agreement, and then we'll be bringing you
New ones.
New salary agreement. Hopefully sooner this year.
Well, hopefully Daryl's been getting paid while we're debating all this.
He has been getting paid, yes.
Hang on there, we, the MOU has been signed. It's just the annual compensation.
Annual compensation agreement is what's on hold right now, yep.
It's that UW hadn't signed the MOU until I don't know when they signed it. I think it was September, but we didn't get a copy of it until last week, so.
Okay.
I didn't mean to get you off topic there if you had other.
No, well, I guess, so, yeah, I I guess sort of action items I'd like to see is that we you know, an approval of the salary agreement, that you give me clear direction on whether you want an Ag and Natural Resource educator located here in Sweetwater County or a Community Vitality and Health. We have the budget funds to move forward with that position. We want to put that position to better serve Sweetwater County. Uh I will also tell you, in the meantime, I haven't just let Sweetwater County go without having support. Um Dagan Montgomery is the ag educator in Sublet County. He's been covering Farson area and been offering programs. Um and we have a new educator in in U N County, uh Michaela McKenna Julian, um who I've asked to help as well. So um but I I'm looking for clear direction in how we move forward with that university-funded position that would just be housed here, uh whether it's community vitality and health focused or Ag and Natural Resources focused, and then an agreement on the salary compensation.
Okay, and that's the CBH educator?
Yeah, so it's either community vitality and health, CBH or Ag and Natural Resources, ANRs.
Okay, so that would be the the second educator position?
Yep.
Okay.
But it's fully funded by the university. And one of the things that's changed is I now supervise both of those positions throughout the state, so um so I can work, you know, it's easier for me to to balance which which direction those positions goes.
Input, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I guess before going forward with a recommendation on whether to do an ag person or a CBH person, I guess I guess I need a little more information about what what each of those different positions would would bring to the community.
Okay, so the community vitality and health position, we really see them as uh facilitators. So we know that, you know, the Wyoming Business Council has folks here, uh the Wyoming Department of Health has folks here. Um Sweetwater County has a a uh Economic Development, you know, council. Those individuals are are folks that do sort of direct service to the community, right? The community vitality and health educators offer education to the community, so teaches them how to maybe look and think about community development, think about uh how to be better boards, how to how to improve leadership. Those are the types of things that they bring to the table. And then they're also designed to be facilitators to help connect those other groups. Um so that's really the way we like to see our our CBH educators, our Ag and Natural Resource educators. A little more simple in terms of understanding what they their role is. They're they're really just focused on, you know, agriculture and natural resources, education programs uh and programming that can include uh having some horticulture background as well. Um but but, you know, we really try and focus on on whatever the community need is related to Ag and Natural Resources. It can be, you know, consultations with small acreage owners or classes and on, you know, sort of small acreage management up to large production agriculture and and those sorts of classes, so.
Bridgers, is that something that we could put off for another month to give you guidance on that? Because that I'm kind of coming to that decision cold and I I'd really like to discuss it with our fair board and and our SEDC and and see where I think the best decision would be.
Yeah, and we could provide you with position descriptions too, so that you could see exactly the skillset we were looking for in the two positions um so that you can make that decision. Yeah.
Any feedback?
I agree with Commissioner Richards. I knee-jerk reaction, the CVAH sounds like duplication, but that might not be true, so I think it would be good to have some more information.
I know where Mary sits. Yeah, I know where Mary sits too.
Just stop eating. Don't mention egg unless you're gonna stop eating.
Yeah.
Where are you guys located right now? You're not still at the college, right?
Yes.
We are still at the college. So the space issue is another discussion, you know, Commissioner Slaughter and I tried to get together. My schedule is it's tough, especially now that I've added uh additional uh employees too. So really, Daryl is the right person to connect to and to move that, any of that discussion forward to in terms of space. I, it's, you know, I tried to provide some of that in this. I, it's, you know, I tried to provide some of that in this document, so you had a sense for what kind of spaces we had in, in other areas. Um, it is the, it is the most limiting space we currently have in Western Wyoming. Um, I know it's not, that's not your, it's not your doing. It's the, you know, decisions by the community college to, to utilize that space for things they needed it more. Um, but, so we went from a really, you know, one of the nicer spaces in, in Western Wyoming and extension, uh, to a so-so and to a barely enough space to, to cram us into the offices right now, so.
Okay. Any other comments or questions commissioners?
Well, we're confident that Mr. Rostlesberger will do a great job. We see a lot of outreach, he's already made huge efforts in the county to evolve everyone, so we appreciate that very much.
With that, we do have the annual compensation agreement that we have un表了.
Mr. Chairman, if, if we pass this resolution today, do we have the money and the correct line items in the budget to cover the payments?
We have sufficient funds within the budget, we would need to adjust.
Not our budget.
Sorry.
Expand the funds, but I, I got a nod from, from, like, Lane back there that we could, we could do that.
Right.
I, I think the, I don't think the initial payment would be a problem, but we might need to address that by the.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I would, I would move to, uh, approve the annual compensation agreement with the University of Wyoming Extension and authorize the chairman to sign.
And I would second that.
Do you have a motion to approve the annual compensation agreement as presented by Commissioner Richards? We've got a second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks, gentlemen, we appreciate you coming back and offering some clarification on that. Hopefully moving forward, we can streamline some of this and, you know, better improve the communication. I'm confident Daryl's the right man for that job, so.
Yep.
Uh, we look forward to all the things you're gonna help with in regards to Ag and the 4-H extension, so thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
Next commissioners is item number eleven. We've got the National Economic Development Week proclamation. Kayla has offered to come up and read that for us. Just kidding. Um, National Economic Development Week is May sixth through the tenth. And the proclamation reads, whereas the International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic developers. And whereas the International Economic Development Council provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory services and research, in-depth publications, public policy advocacy, and initiatives such as the accredited Economic Development Organization Program and the Certified Economic Developer Designation. And whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. Whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities and a variety of other institutions. Whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities and improve the quality of life in their regions. And whereas economic developers work in the county of Sweetwater within the state of Wyoming and now therefore be resolved, the chairman and the commission of the county of Sweetwater do hereby recognize May sixth through the tenth as National Economic Development Week in the county of Sweetwater and remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports the expansion of career opportunities and improving quality of life. Welcome, I should introduce you first, but I was on a, I was on a tangent there, so I had to keep going.
It's totally cool, I appreciate it. I've read that before and yes, it is quite lengthy. Um, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Kayla McDonald, Economic Development Specialist for the Sweetwater Economic Development Coalition. I have Chairman Mark Cowan here joining me as well. Um, we are here today to thank you for your continued support of our economic development efforts here in Sweetwater County. Um, we normally have events throughout the week and activities planned, but this year we kind of scaled back a little bit and we are doing one event this week and one event next week. One of our board members who you, um, recently appointed, Casey Kukert, has volunteered her time to do a presentation and training tomorrow that is going to be on social media and growing your leads. It's a free virtual training and the information can all be found on our Facebook page and Instagram as well as our website. And we also have flyers if you'd be interested. And then following next Wednesday, we have invited Josh Darrell, the CEO of the Wyoming Business Council, to come out and talk about their initiatives and what they're doing and just growth around the state of Wyoming and how S E D C is going to be working with them going forward. So that will be a free presentation, um, sponsored by Rocky Mountain Power and the Sweetwater Events Complex from noon to one thirty, and that'll be in the Bison Room at the Events Complex and a lunch is served. So we encourage, um, the community to come learn about what the business council has to offer and their initiatives going forward as well as any other members of the elected official, um, body. Mark and I will both be dividing and conquering this evening and attending both the City of Green River and City of Rock Springs councils, but they will also, um, do this proclamation as well. So any questions or anything else, we'll, we'll take those as well. We just appreciate your support.
Thanks, Kayla, thanks, Mark. Any?
Photo op?
No, not right now. Any questions commissioners? Wait your turn commissioner.
Great.
Thanks very much, we appreciate it and, uh, look forward to good things coming our way.
Sounds great, thank you.
Do we need a motion?
We do.
We do.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we, uh, approve the proclamation, um, declaring May sixth through May tenth, National Economic Development Week and allow the chairman to sign.
Got a motion by Commissioner Richards, do we have a second? Second, second by Commissioner Jones on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Everyone likes a photo op.
Apparently.
Let's do it.
Okay.
Set up your camera.
How about you?
Smoking rats.
Yeah, yeah. In the hot seat today, all of them.
Yeah, you good with that?
Yeah, I'm here. Say if you want, if you all do it.
Next item on the agenda is a lunch break, and we're about ten minutes ahead of schedule. So our next action item is slated for one o'clock. If we're a little ahead of schedule, we'll try and go early, cause that's about an hour and twenty minutes ahead, so take about an hour break.